Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Boston City Council. I would gently remind our guests in the audience to please put a mask on if you have one. If not, we'll be happy to get you one. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the council president pro tempore. Viewers can watch today's council meeting live on YouTube by visiting boston.gov/city-council-tv. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll so we can ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Sabby George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, would you give a quorum?
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. On behalf of Counselor Campbell, I would like to ask our esteemed Clerk, Counselor clerk Maureen Feeny, to please deliver our invocation today.
Thank you. Oh thou who madest one nation out of many people, amidst our diversity of race and tradition and faith, unite us in a common love of freedom. Revive us in a spirit of devotion to the common good, so that we may open new doors to the neglected and oppressed. Cleanse the heart of our nation from that greed which preys upon others. Endow our leaders with wisdom, that they may stand among nations as examples of benevolence and exalted justice. Help us to make this land a common workshop of its people, where all may find their place and work, keen to do their best. Hear these words of the Athenian Pericles: "I would have you day by day fix your eyes upon the greatness of your country, until you become filled with love for her; and when you are impressed by the spectacle of her glory, reflect that it has been acquired by good and compassionate men and women, who knew their duty and had the courage to do it." And these words of the Hebrew psalmist: "Let the people give praise, O God, of all nations." Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those inspiring words. I'd now invite everyone who is able to please stand, and I'd like to ask Counselor Flynn to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. Thank you, colleagues. Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance record to indicate that Counselor Wu has joined us as well. We are now on to the first order of business, which is the approval of the minutes. Seeing and hearing no discussion on the matter, the chair moves to approve the minutes from the last meeting as presented. All of those in favor of approving minutes from the last meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The minutes of the last meeting stand as approved. Moving right along to communications from her honor, the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 1108 through 1129 together?
Thank you. Docket 1108, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Vicky Kesar Rugo as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1109, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andrew F. Sacks as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1110, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Marty A. Glenn as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1111, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of the Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1112, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Carol L. Mooney as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of the Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1113, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Susan Gugarian as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for potential designation of the Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1114, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Diane Parkon as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1115, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Christopher Hall as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1116, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lynn Smilage as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1117, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Earl Taylor as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of the Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1118, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Freeman as a member of the study committee to prepare for the potential designation of the Withington House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1119, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Carol L. Mooney as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1120, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Andrew F. Sacks as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1121, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Diane Parkon as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1122, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Vicky Kesar Rugo as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1123, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Earl Taylor as a member of the study committee to prepare the report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1124, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of John Friedman as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number, oh my gosh. Docket number 1125, order, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Marty A. Glenn, a member of the study committee, to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1126, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Christopher Hall as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1127, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Kirsten Hoffman as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. Docket number 1128, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Susan Gugarian as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District. And 1129, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Lynn Smilage as a member of the study committee to prepare a report for the potential designation of a Swan House Architectural Conservation District.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please take a break, have some tea, and dockets 1108 through 1129 shall be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Madam Clerk, would you also please amend the minutes to indicate the fact that Counselor Campbell has joined us as well? And we are now moving on to reports of public officers and others. When you are ready, Madam Clerk, no rush. Would you please read dockets 1130 through 1134?
Thank you. Docket 1130, notices received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Stephanie Everett as the executive director of Police Accountability and Transparency, effective May 3, 2021. Docket number 1131, notices received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Mariama White-Hammond as chief of Environment, Energy, and Open Space, effective April 26, 2021. Docket number 1132, notices received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Sean Ligon as the interim commissioner of Inspection Services Department, effective April 19, 2021. Docket number 1133, notices received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Mary Churchill as the chief of Policy and Planning, effective February 22, 2021. Docket number 1134, notices received from the acting mayor of the appointment of Dionne Irish as the chief of Operations, effective April 19, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Several folks have asked about these notices as they go back several months. I checked with the administration, and it's just a HR housekeeping issue, so dockets 1130 through 1134 shall be placed on file. Moving right along to reports of committees, Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0845, 0956, 0954, 1012, and 1036 together?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket 0845, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on July 19, 2021. Docket number 0845, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,150,000 in the form of a grant for a comprehensive agency strategy that connects law enforcement, employment, education, public health, and youth development agencies to reduce youth violence in the Commonwealth. This additional funding increased the total grant to $2,300,000 over two years, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Health and Human Services, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the FY '22 and FY '23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0956, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on September 24, 2021. Docket number 0956, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $399,418.73 in the form of a grant for the FY '22 State 911 Training Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 0954, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on September 24, 2021. Docket number 0954, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $4 million in the form of a grant for the FY '22 Public Safety Answering Points Support and Incentive Grant, awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Docket number 1012, the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on October 4, 2021. Docket number 1012, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $1,500,000 in the form of a grant for the FY '21 Securing the Cities, awarded by the United States Department of Homeland Security, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund year two of the Securing the Cities grant project, which enhances the ability of the United States to detect and prevent terrorist attacks and other high consequence events utilizing nuclear or radiological materials that pose a threat to the homeland security in high-risk urban areas. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. And docket number 1036, Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, to which was referred on October 4, 2021. Docket number 1036, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expand an amount of $239,254 in the form of a grant for the FY '20 DNA Capacity Enhancement and Backlog Reduction Program, awarded by the United States Department of Justice, to be administered by the police department. The grant will fund two criminalist positions, overtime, lab supplies, and continuing education expenses. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. How about a round of applause for our clerk?
Oxygen, please.
Take a break, please. So the chair will soon recognize Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. She will be discussing all these dockets together, and then we will obviously vote on them separately. So the chair now recognizes Chair Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Counselor Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Madam Clerk. As I often tell my team, you are hired. Thank you very much. The committee heard from a number of members from the administration who gave the committee a breakdown and overview of how these monies would be spent. We also submitted document, the department also submitted documentation, which we forwarded, of course, to the council and as a part of these dockets as well. We heard from Frank DeLuca, who is the program administrator at BPD and also for SSYI. We heard from Lori Martin, who's the program director for SSYI at the Health Commission. We heard from Ally Bowler, who's a senior program manager for SSYI at the Health Commission. Mark Scott, who's the director of Division of Violence Prevention at the Health Commission. Christopher McUnus, who's the director of Quality Assurance and Operations Division at BPD. Anthony or Tony Rizzo, who's the program coordinator at BPD. Timothy Connolly, who's a BPD captain who spoke on one of the dockets. Kevin Lorade, who's the director of Quality Assurance and Forensic Division at BPD. And then lastly, Maria Achievers, who runs the Department of Research and Development at BPD. And I want to thank all of them for coming, providing robust testimony for each docket. I will talk through them each separately and then, of course, take a vote on each. The first is docket 0845. This is the SSYI grant. We've received this grant for a number of years, and this committee has actually done a lot of work to improve how the resources are given out, namely that there are diverse array of organizations that receive it in community, and also some of how they measure their work. I will say there's always, I think, ways to improve in which we measure our success, including for this grant, so the next council will have to sort of take this over, which I think is really important. This particular round, the funding went to those who work in occupational training and employment service. This includes More Than Words, JRI, Strive, Project Right, Mission Safe, New Beginning, the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation of Boston, Youth Options Unlimited Boston, inner-city weightlifting, education service, an education service provider at the Notre Dame Education Center, a behavioral health service provider, and some of BMC's work at the Best Program and in partnership with the Bay Cove Human Services. And what was great about this round of SSYI, despite the severe disruptions with COVID-19, SSYI not only met their service goals, they exceeded them. And this is a reminder that this grant is used to target those who are gang-involved and those deemed to be, and I'll put this in quotes, "at risk" and "most at risk of involvement in violence." And so they reached many folks. The initiative has a contract, has contact with nearly 3,500 youth. It enrolled 122 young people out of its target of 300 in the midst of COVID. So clearly more work to do, but exceeded its work this year compared to last. BPD is also in agreement with the Health Commission to actually partner SSYI, which hasn't been done in a long time. Usually it's just through BPD. Now there's a partnership between the two, which should be applauded. The next docket is 0954. This was a grant in the cost or in the amount of $4 million. This will fund costs with enhanced 911 services. We heard lengthy testimony of how this will be used to maintain and upgrade the computer dispatch system and improve technology improvements, which is obviously critical, and defray some of the costs for 911 personnel. They always are looking for more resources here because that department, frankly, is overworked when you think about the number of calls. This grant is in partnership with docket 0956, which is in the amount of $399,418.73, which funds the training and the certification of these 911 telecommunications staff members. And training topics include, obviously, communication. There's a CLE requirement for folks, products and software, enhancing the service itself, administrative and public safety communications. The next docket was docket 1012. We heard a lot on this docket, and so I encourage folks, if they have not watched the video, they can. This is year two of a two-year funding program called Securing the Cities. It is a regional approach to deal with and to detect and prevent terrorist attacks and other high-consequence events, which could utilize nuclear or other radiological materials that pose a threat, obviously, to homeland security and particularly in urban areas. The funds would be used for a whole host of things, including backpack detention devices used in large crowds by various personnel, and also to cover some costs in an event that there are events that call for more staffing, given the risk factors. I want to thank Tony in particular, who was brought on to manage this grant. We asked for a lot of transparency here. He provided a lot more than is normally required in hearings and some documentation, which I want to applaud the department and particularly his efforts on. And then lastly, we have docket 1036, pretty self-explanatory. This is an amount of $239,254. We've received this before. We could always use more. This helps the department deal with the DNA backlog and to reduce that backlog, to also do more in terms of collecting and receiving data to track what the backlog is and to hire some more folks in order to deal with it. And so this was a critical grant that the department is always looking for. It funds a couple of positions. It helps with lab supplies, which are really important as they're going through the backlog, and continuing education expenses, which are required for certain positions within that department. So I want to also thank the department for sending folks to testify on that. At this time, as the chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeking suspension and, not suspension, passage of all of these dockets. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for that very thorough overview. Again, we will vote on these all individually, but we will do a voice vote. An individual can, of course, doubt the vote if they wish, but I don't think that will be necessary. So beginning with the first one, Counselor Andrea Campbell, Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0845. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The order is passed. Chair Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0956. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay. Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Chair Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0954. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Chair Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1012. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. And finally, Chair Campbell seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1036. All of those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Thank you. Chair Campbell. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 1010?
Certainly. Docket 1010, the Committee on Housing and Community Development, to which was referred on September 29, 2021. Docket number 1010, in order authorizing the city of Boston to apply for and to accept and expand the federal fiscal year 2021 Continuum of Care grant funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount not to exceed $45 million. These funds will be used to support programs, provide services, and housing to persons experiencing homelessness. Submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Chair Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Counselor Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to first thank my vice chair of the committee, Counselor Bach, who helped to hold this, hold the ultimate hearing on this money that we've had many years and coming forward. And what the folks who attended included not only Counselor Bach, but also Counselor Flynn, Counselor Mejia, and Counselor Braden. Leila Bernstein is a former colleague of mine, who also works at DND in support of Housing Division, and her work on homelessness and helping to eradicate veterans homelessness and also making to sure that we have a comprehensive plan that is not only regional, has been, I think, an actual lead in the region for how to deal with homelessness. So her coming to testify, I know, was really important for us to hear how the money would be used, especially as we're getting additional funds in ARPA. Ultimately, this is a grant, again, that we've received before, and I just would love to, excuse me, I am recommending that this ought to pass, but I would prefer that my vice chair also added any additional details and notes from the hearing.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. The chair now recognizes the vice chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, Vice Chair Bach. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and Madam Chair. We did have a great hearing, and I would just say, for the council to understand, if you want any further details, there is a three-page fact sheet on these continuum of care programs in the packet. As Counselor Edwards said, it's mainly a continuation of programs that we do right now, although within that 45, there is about $4 million worth of new funding, about half for domestic violence-focused housing programs and half for folks who are homeless. But I just really want to stress for people, because it's come up a lot in our public conversation, that these really are housing-first dollars. These are dollars from the federal government that are very focused on actually providing more housing opportunities to people. And they do come with a supportive service component of the funding, which is critical. We found a lot of times that, well, people need that low-barrier housing first. They don't need housing only, right? They need to get in, and then they need the support. And I just would echo the chair's comments about how much work our Department of Neighborhood Development, that portion that Lila runs, does on all of this. So I would just say, you know, we ask lots of questions. Counselor Mejia, you know, raised some great points about the sort of people who don't get counted as officially homeless under HUD's definition. We're not really able to use these funds for, so for instance, our young people who might be doubled up. But I think we've got some city-focused funds focused on that, and I would just say that Lila is very open to all of the work that needs to be done ahead in this space. So it's an important grant for us to authorize, even though there's lots more work needed and ongoing. So I would join the chair in her recommendation that we pass it today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair Lydia Edwards and Vice Chair Kenzie Bach, Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 1010. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket has passed. Moving right along, Madam Clerk, to matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0734, counselors Mejia and Bach offer the following order for hearing regarding reparations and their impact on civil rights of Black Bostonians.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Chair Julia Mejia, who is the Chair of the Committee on Civil Rights. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yesterday, the Committee on Civil Rights held a hearing on docket 0734, order for a hearing regarding reparations and their impact on civil rights on Black Bostonians. It was a marathon hearing, spanning over three and a half hours. We were joined by, we were joined by several of my council colleagues, including Counselor Bach, the co-sponsor of this hearing, in addition to Counselor Braden, Flynn, Flaherty, Campbell, and Wu. Representative Brandy Fugler Oakley also joined us. We structured the hearing into several different panels, starting with an African libation by Dr. Van Damir and a land acknowledgement from Jean-Luc Piaget. Our first panel, consisting of Dr. Van Damir and Dr. Jamari Kamara, discussed the history of slavery and reparations, both nationwide and in Boston in particular. Our second panel featured a number of amazing advocates, including Armani White, Aziza Goodnight Robinson, Tammy Ty, Tanisha Sullivan, Dr. Atiya Martin, and Kevin Peterson. The covered subjects range from health and wellness, land and gentrification, education, arts, and culture, economic empowerment, and more. I want to uplift a quote in particular from Armani, who said, "It's important to recognize that we came here as slaves. We got free, and we were able to purchase land, but then that land was taken from us by a city government and used to create a way for business." I wanted to uplift that quote in particular because it drives home that this conversation, it's not just about slavery. It's about the repeated injustices and policy decisions that have been made specifically to disenfranchise and target Black communities. Our third panel consisted of Yvette Modestine, who summarized and detailed several reparation efforts across the country and across the world, and reminded us that any effort towards reparations here in Boston needs to be guided by a sense of healing and love. We were also grateful to have been joined by the administration, who were not only present, but listened and learned, and moved their schedules around so that they can stay and take part in the conversation. We were joined by Chief Lori Nelson, Chief Selena Barrows-Miller, and Jessica Philippe. During the hearing, several advocates, both on the panel and from those who presented public testimony, voiced their support and urged the council to take public testimony, voiced their support and urged the council to take up the cause of creating a commission to explore reparations. We will continue the work with advocates to determine the best course of action, implementing a reparations program and process here in the city of Boston. I want to close out by sharing a quote offered by Dr. Kumar. "The question is not what needs to be done. The fundamental issue is whether we have the political will." At this time, we'll be keeping this order in committee, and I also would like to thank Tanisha Sullivan for inspiring us in filing this hearing order, and all of the folks who have been doing the work to get us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Did the co-sponsor wish to speak on this?
No, I would just echo the Chair's report. There was a very good report.
Thank you. Thank you. The co-sponsor echoes the Chair's report on that. And docket 073, would anyone else wish to speak on docket 0734? Seeing no takers, docket 0734 shall remain in the Committee on Civil Rights. Madam Clerk, would you now please read docket 0600?
Certainly. Docket 0600, Counselor Mejia offered the following ordinance to create a task force to address literacy rates in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair now recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I unfortunately could not chair this hearing, so I want to thank my Vice Chair, Counselor at Large Michael Flaherty, for doing that. I do know that this is, the conversation is to continue, however, and that the matter would stay in committee, and we would have a working session to talk about the composition responsibilities of the task force. So, now I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Chair, and then, of course, the lead sponsor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair now recognizes the Vice Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Michael, Vice Chair Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a very important issue in our city. This will establish, this ordinance will establish a literacy task force to examine literacy rates. They will study the rates of literacy across Boston, among adults and children, and also help develop a plan that will, and also put programs and policies in place to address literacy in the city. There's also a task force membership where non-city of Boston employees would be able to get a $100 stipend, not to exceed a certain amount. And we had a great conversation with the administration and with the panelists that the lead sponsor had assembled, and questions remain, of course. We put a series of questions in front of the administration. So we look forward to further discussion with the administration alongside our colleague and lead sponsor, Julie Mejia. Through the Chair, to the lead sponsor.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Chair now recognizes the lead sponsor, and the at-large Counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Julian Mejia. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to Counselor Flaherty for chairing a great hearing. It was incredibly inspiring to be able to sit in a meeting with so many experts in their fields, uniting around a common cause. Thank you to the advocates who made their voices heard, Edith Brazil, Elizabeth Santiago, Lee Harler, as well as members of the administration who came to offer their support, including Trin Nguyen, Yusufi Valley, Jennifer Villar Wong, Christine Di Valio. We learned a lot about people, we learned a lot about, we learned a lot about people who this ordinance was designed to help, and how we can make our efforts even stronger. The first thing we learned is that this is a pathway to literacy is different for everyone. And while some people, it may take a matter of months, for others, it may be years before they are able to get on that path. This is why it's so important to ensure that, one of the responsibilities of this task force is to find ways to make access to services easier for people who cannot read or write in any language. Because while people are learning to read and write, they also still need help with the services that our city provides. The second thing we learned is that people who are relying on these literacy services are coming from all backgrounds, and need services that are catered to their lived experiences. Some people are coming as doctors and lawyers from their homeland, who can read and write in their native language, but have very limited English proficiency. Other people have never learned to read or write even in their native language because of war, lack of funds, family obligations, physical abilities, and more. We need services that cater to each of these groups that allow them to thrive. It seems like forming this task force will be the best way to ensure that we're coordinating and consolidating our services in the best way possible. And I also just want to, like, take a quick moment to acknowledge that, you know, we talk a lot about the school to prison pipeline here in the city of Boston, and I think this is a key opportunity to really look into how a lot of our young people are struggling to read and write, and showing up with social and emotional issues in class, and oftentimes they end up in DYS. So if we can tackle the issue of literacy and get a handle of it, we might be able to address the school to prison pipeline. Then we also have our returning citizens, who are coming back from incarceration, and struggle with reading and writing, and are unable to fill out a job application. So I think about those folks. If we're really serious about addressing the issues of violence and poverty, then this will be an opportunity for us to really look at some of the root causes of what some of our returning citizens are experiencing. And then we're thinking about those who are coming to this country and juggling to make their ends meet, who've come here with interrupted education and are struggling to read and write. So I see this task force as an opportunity to address a lot of the issues that we've been talking about here in the city of Boston, and do so in a way that's going to look at some of the root causes. So I'm really looking forward to this conversation, and looking forward to working alongside my partners here, to move this as quickly as possible, so that we can file this ordinance and get it passed through the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mejia. Docket 0600 shall remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 1135?
Certainly. Docket 1135, Counselor Mejia offered the following resolution, supporting House Bill 1339 and Senate Bill 829, an act to guarantee debt-free public higher education.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Julian Mejia. The floor is yours.
All right. Today's my day. This is the last one. So, thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this year, our body passed a resolution urging the Biden administration to cancel all student debt within their first 100 days in office. Sadly, as anyone burdened with the weight of student debt will tell you, that has not happened. However, thanks largely to the advocates of the community organizations and advocacy groups such as Zero Debt Massachusetts and FENOM, efforts are underway in our State House to work towards addressing debt-free public higher education. H.1339-S829, an act to guarantee debt-free public higher education submitted by Rep. Higgins and Senator Eldridge, is a systemic solution to the crisis of college unaffordability and student loan debt, which will guarantee tuition and fees for public college. It'll also award additional cost of living grant money to low-income families to eliminate the need to borrow for housing, transportation, childcare, et cetera. This is incredibly impactful legislation, especially since Boston is home to UMass Boston, the city's only public research university, and the third most diverse campus in the United States. UMass Boston is also a school where students are being saddled with debt that impacts their daily lives. Having access to debt-free school in Boston would be an amazing opportunity for students who want to go to college but are afraid of taking on a lifelong debt. For those reasons, I move that we suspend and pass the rules to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. Would any other counselors wish to speak on docket 1135? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor to docket 1135? Madam Clerk, please add counselors Arroyo, Baker, Bach, Braden, Campbell, Edwards, Asai B. George, Flaherty, Flynn. Please add the Chair. Please add Counselor Wu. And Counselor Mejia seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1135. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The docket is hereby adopted. The resolution is hereby adopted. Thank you very much. We're now moving on to late files, and I am informed by the Clerk that there is one late-file matter, which is a personnel order. All those in favor of adding the late-file matter to the agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. The late-file matter has been duly added to the agenda. And Madam Clerk, would you please read the late-file matter into the record?
Certainly. In the City Council, October 27, 2021, Counsel O'Malley for Counselor Edwards.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of the late-file personnel order. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The late-file personnel order has passed. Would any counselors wish to remove any matter from the green sheets? You may do so at this time. The Chair recognizes the at-large Counsel from Rosendale, Counselor Michelle Wu. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove docket number 1070, which is on page 12 of 20.
Okay. Folks could equate themselves with page 12 of 20. Excuse me. And I'm sorry, would you please read that docket number again, Counselor Wu?
1070.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we poll the committee first?
Yes. I'm sorry.
On planning, development, and transportation?
I was just not prepared. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all right. The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Counselor Wu.
Yes.
Counselor Wu, yes. Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Counselor Baker, yes. Counselor Arroyo?
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Braden?
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. And Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. There's unanimous consent.
Thank you very much. The matter is now properly before us. Chair Wu, the floor is yours on docket 1070.
Me too.
Ah, I apologize. Before I see the floor to you, Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 1070 into the record?
Thank you. Page 12 of 20, in the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 1070, sponsored by the mayor, message and order approving the receipt of the preservation restriction agreement on the Vertulo Building at 7484 Fairmount Hyde Park, Boston, Massachusetts, It was filed in committee on October 20 of 2021.
Thank you very much. The Chair now recognizes Chair Michelle Wu on docket 1070. Yes, for what reason does the Counsel rise? Counselor Bach?
Sorry, a point of order. I believe I'm a member of the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee, so I would like to be entered in support of the...
Counsel, I am very, very sorry.
That's fine.
All right. Counselor Bach, also a member of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, votes in the affirmative to place docket 1070 before the body. Chair now recognizes Chair of the Committee, Counselor Wu.
Thank you. I apologize, Madam Clerk, for the late notice. This was filed last week, and we heard some urgency from the administration and from community members on this, because the building in question houses several local small businesses and organizations who are eventually intending to purchase the building, and this would be one part of making sure that all the details are set before we move in that direction. I've had conversations with the district counselor and would cede the floor to him to give a little more detail here, but I would ask that we move this so as not to hold up any of the community-side work that has been happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park, Counselor Arroyo. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Wu. There is some urgency behind this. This is a pretty famous building on Fairmount, right there near Cleary Square. It's one of the oldest sort of wood buildings there, but it, more importantly, houses five small businesses, four of which are Black-owned, that are currently purchasing the building together as a group, and this would go a long way towards helping preserve and make that possible. So, I fully support this. As a district counselor, this is a great thing. So, thank you to the counselor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Would any counselors wish to speak on this, seeing no takers? Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, Chair Wu, as well as the district counselor, Counselor Arroyo, seek approval, removing, we've already removed docket 1070. All those in favor, passage, please indicate by saying aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The late, the green-sheet matter has hereby been passed. Thank you. Would any other counselors wish to remove any matters from the green sheets? Seeing no takers, we're now moving on to the consent agenda, and I've been informed by the Clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda. The Chair removes for the, Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. The ayes have it. The consent agenda has hereby been adopted. We will now open it up to announcements, seeing no takers. I will, I see one, but I will kick things off. Today's a very important day in the City Council. Not only is it my penultimate meeting in this position, but it is the birthday of our colleague, Counselor Frank Baker. So please join me in wishing Counselor Baker very, very happy birthday. That's it. And the Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston, Counselor Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Just two very quick announcements first. I just wanted all of us to join and congratulations to our Rocco Adessa. He is now formally inducted into the Order of the Sons and Daughters of Italy Winthrop Lodge. He has been working on that induction for almost three years. So now he's a formal member, and I was proud to be there as a current member of the North End Lodge of the Order of Sons and Daughters of Italy, to induct him, and will be presenting a citation on behalf of the City Council to him. So just, congratulations, Rocco. We're very proud of you. He told me, I think he's been working in and around the city of Boston for well over 30 years. So he is just as much more ours than he is Winthrop's, and we're proud of any accomplishment that Rocco achieves. That's the first one. And then I want to give congratulations to the Otis Elementary School. We have won the School on the Move Prize, and are getting a $100,000 grant. And I just want to say, just for bragging rights, that's three of the four past School on the Move awards have gone to District One. I just want to note that. So the Otis Elementary, the Donald McKay, and the Harvard Kent. Congrats also to District One, the principals there, and Tommy Welsh especially, who's our District One coordinator for BPS. So just congratulation on BPS and getting these wonderful awards. So, that's all.
Thank you, Counselor Edwards. Congrats to the Otis School community and our dear Rocco. The Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Frank Baker. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, my first job that I sat in City Hall was with Rocco 35 years ago, so, I was a custodian. I rise today not to seek accolades from my colleagues for my birthday, but to talk a little bit about my parents, because it's, because of them, that's why I'm here. I want to thank them first for not stopping at 11. Yeah, yeah. I was the only one in my family planned. Everyone else was an accident. That's what I like to say. I'd like to thank them for changing patterns in our family's life and trajectories. My father died with 53 years of sobriety. My mother, my mother was an amazing woman in this time of strong woman. My mother still remains, to this day, the strongest person that I ever knew. Her father was illiterate. He came, he went from Ireland, County Kerry, to Montreal. My mother was raised up there. She came here in her 20s, was pregnant for 20 years, but she also only went to the fifth grade. But she was able to, with help of her friends at the time, all women in the neighborhood, all Dorchester women, in the early '70s, they formed one of the first health centers in Dorchester. It was the Little House Health Center. And just need to mention my parents. They've been gone for a little while, and again, we're all only here because of our parents, because of our grandparents and our great-grandparents. So, I felt compelled to talk about Mom today, so thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All said, thank you very much, Counselor Baker. Round of applause for Mr. and Mrs. Baker. Bringing your dad to the Curly House was a great privilege for me all those years ago.
It was great for him, too.
That was great. Thank you. Any other, oh, the chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill, Counselor Kenzie Bach. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and happy birthday, Counselor Baker. Keeping with the theme of personal announcements, I just wanted to enter two words of congratulations. As I think many folks on the council know, I have two siblings, and they are both having very big weeks. On Saturday, my sister Abigail was married to Ned Downey in Copley Square at Trinity Church, and it was a great joyful celebration, and we're very happy to welcome him to the family. So wanted to express my congrats to her. And then earlier this morning, just a few hours ago, my younger brother Oliver was sworn into the New Hampshire bar, where he's already started working as a public defender. So just lots of congratulations to both Abby and Oliver, and wanted to enter that personal note into the record. Thank you.
A round of applause for Abby and Oliver Bach. Thank you for sharing, Counselor Bach. Wonderful news. Any counselors wish, any other statements? Seeing none. Today, we will adjourn our meeting. I'd ask every counselor and everyone in the audience, if you are able, to please stand. We're going to adjourn our meeting in honor of a dear friend to me and my family for many, many years, a legend in West Roxbury, Jim Hickey, who passed away over the weekend, James Hickey. And so please bow your heads in a moment of silence for Jim Hickey and his late wife, Claire, who predeceased him a couple of months ago. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of Jim and Claire Hickey. We are scheduled to meet again in the I and L chamber next Wednesday, November 3, at 12 noon. All in favor of adjournment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.